Good evening and welcome to the Coeur d'Alene City Council Meeting, February 2024. I'll call this meeting to order and the clerk will note that all council are present. And we'll begin this evening with an invocation by Jason Nye of CDAIDE. Welcome, Jason.
So, CDAIDE is a nonprofit that helps out local hospitality workers through financial crisis, so restaurant workers, hotel workers, people that drive our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful this evening to gather as representatives and members of this wonderful community that we live in. We ask that Thou will bless the leaders of our community and the citizens of our community that we will have compassion, that we will have knowledge in Thy guidance as decisions are made. And we ask that Thou will help us all to be neighborly, to be loving to those around us. And we ask that Thou will help this community to thrive and those in it. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. And with that, we will ask Councilman English to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Does the council have any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. We have two people wishing to share their wisdom with us tonight. The first is Bill Breezy. Welcome, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Bill Breezy. I am here to talk about traffic, not to complain about it, but I think I have a solution or a way to reduce traffic specifically on the 95 and Government Way corridors. I have, the issue, I think, is about traffic light synchronization. And the lights have not been synchronized for quite a while. And we cannot control all traffic lights right now because ITD governs and controls a lot of them. They control all of 95 and they control the east-west lanes of Government Way. CDA controls the north-south lanes, lights for Government Way. What can go wrong with that? And we wonder why the traffic isn't flowing better. So, I've proposed that we take control locally of the lights. Rather than letting Boise synchronize these things, we should be able to do those locally. And that way, we can look at in-time traffic and make corrections as necessary. But in order to do that, we need to have the ITD turn the traffic control responsibility over to the local authority having jurisdiction. I do have a draft resolution for that, and I'll leave it with the clerk if I don't have time to read it for the end of my talk. The second thing I'm proposing to do is something that was done in Tucson back in the eighties, the mid-eighties. And they had, very similar to the north-south corridors that you have here, although much busier and much longer, they were overcrowding all three arterials that go to downtown Tucson. And so what Tucson did was they took the least traveled road and they, you know, and they put signs on there, mid-block, midway between lights, that said, "If you're traveling this speed, you will hit the next green light."
Oh, wow.
That is proactive way of controlling traffic. I would propose getting rid of the flashing yellow lights that says, "Be prepared to stop." Let's be proactive in this and we can help control traffic, help reduce accidents and The byproduct of this is that we saw in Tucson, and I was personally responsible for at least one daily trip, actually, two daily trips, was I traveled a mile out of my way to go to that road so that I could get downtown faster than I would have normally. And so I think by doing this, we can increase the capacity of the 95 and we can reduce traffic on Government Way and forth.
Thank you.
So I will just hand my resolution over and hopefully you will consider it.
Thank you very much. Tom Torgerson?
Oh, dear God. You all know me and three minutes is going to be tough. Tom Torgerson, 4808 Fernand Hill Road. Real quickly, I'm here to talk about the sale of dirt and then potentially the transfer of, like, the Atlas waste product back. First of all, I think the city by law is commanded to sell property at market value. So anything that goes out, I don't care if it's fee simple land or if it's stuff off your property. I couldn't offer you $500 and buy one of your dump trucks. It's going to go out to bid. It's going to be sold at that price. So if the URD, and Tony's done a great bunch of stuff and Phil and I graduated together, he's a great guy, but I'm just telling you, it's not right. It has to be sold at the, like, $13 or $14 per cubic yard and then don't take contaminated soils and put them on city property because I have been told for over 10 years by Steve Widmire, by everybody, by a few of you, that the URDs and the city council are completely segregated. Well, then they should be, and they are. So everybody gets it out. If you want to sell that dirt because you think it's good, because you can't, you know, build your wellsite on it, so be it. That's great. Then put that dirt out for bid. They're going to widen that freeway to three lanes each way. ITD, even though they gave you the property, they're going to want that great loamy sand for that. I just cannot believe you would consider, one, giving that soil to anybody, and, two, putting crappy stuff on the city property. And I'm just begging you, delay it, do whatever, but it's not right. It needs to go to bid. It needs to be sold for the residents of Coeur d'Alene. And full disclosure, I live about 1,800 feet outside of the city of Ole Miss. But I was born here, about five blocks away. And I am desperately in love with this town. And it just, everything has to be above board. That's all I got. That's the shortest speech I ever gave.
Thank you. Any announcements from council?
No, just a question, Mr. Mayor, on the resolution for Mr. Breezy. What happens with that? Do we have staff contacting him?
Well, we'll take a look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Then I'll direct it from there.
Thank you.
I thought you had two.
No, that was it.
Okay. Okay. I would ask the mayor, the council to confirm the appointment of Mike Becker as a trustee for the Sea of Coeur d'Alene Employee Benefits Trust.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor respond with aye.
Aye.
Opposed with nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second. It's our discussion. Hearing none, will the clerk take the roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carries. We move on to new business, and the first item is a change order at our wastewater treatment building, one of the buildings. Welcome, Mike Becker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Congratulations on your new appointment.
I was just getting ready to say thank you for that.
Another meeting.
So, I'm prepared to give you kind of an old-school presentation tonight, hope you don't mind. But I think we'll be able to get through this in the same fashion that we would if we had PowerPoint. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present the wastewater department's request to approve change order number one. This change order is for the operations building remodel. As you may recall, the operations building that we're presently in has been there since the 1950s, and we've simply outgrown it. And so what we did is we took the collections department building and we remodeled it to include office spaces and operations center for the treatment plant operations. This building will actually function as the centerpiece for operations at the treatment plant. So, change order number one comprises of eight change orders, proposals. The architect uses a different term versus the engineers, and this slide shows all eight of them. I don't want to bore you with highlighting all of them, so I'll just pick two bigger ones. Change order proposal number two was we went from what is called a vinyl LVT floor to an epoxy coating. Lessons learned with our collections building is that the LV floor, LVT floor simply floats on top of the concrete. Collections doesn't base their main operations out of the building, whereas the treatment plant will. So we wanted a more resilient floor that could withstand the abuse of heavy traffic. Moving on to change order number six. There we go. So change order number six included a bunch of different modifications. One, we added 17 lockers in the men's locker room for that. We already had lockers that were in that locker room, but the collections department needed double lockers up there for their safety equipment. So we are getting additional lockers for them. We've replaced a bunch of outlets and moved outlets and switches. And then we also deleted a bunch of things in our workshop area. Change order proposal number seven was for miscellaneous electric. As you can see, we have three different panels that are going to be operating out of here. And we didn't want to combine them all into one, so we set up three different panels in the process. This slide shows the actual financial breakdown. Remember, this is a multiple-year project, and so we rejected bids the first time, modified our budget, modified the project scope, and we came in slightly under our original first bid. And with change order number one, that's these eight change order proposals, comes to a total of $94,320.28. When added to the contractor's original price, bid price, we're still sailing under our budget amount by 120, little under $129,000. So based on this information, it is staff's recommendation that we, council should approve change order number one to the operations building remodel contract with Darden Enterprises in the amount of $94,320.28. And with that, I will entertain any questions.
Do we have, Woody?
Just two questions. So the architects and the engineers missed these things? They weren't included in the original design?
They, I wouldn't say that they missed them. Some of these things were afterthoughts, but yeah, there's a couple of them that should have been caught that we've, we caught because I'm actually functioning as the construction manager on the project as well.
Okay. The other one is, it's always weird when you get a number one. Does that mean there's a number two coming down the pipe?
Number two will be coming down, but guess what? It has a credit to it, so we're going to get money back.
So you think you're going to be under budget?
Yes, I believe we're still, we're targeted to move into the building the first week in March, and so we'll be presenting those last two remaining change order proposals to council right after we get in there, make sure nothing else blindsides us.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just to clarify and for the people who might be watching and stuff, when you talked about, you know, had been used by collections department and now going to get heavier use and stuff, but I'm, and what went through my mind at first is, I thought we did the billing down here or collection agency, but this isn't, this, define the collections department.
This is actually the treatment operations department now.
Okay, yeah, and it was.
So they're the ones that operate the switches and...
Right, right, and it was before the collection.
It was for the collections division, two separate divisions within their wastewater department.
Right, and, okay, different collections and dispersal.
Okay, yes.
Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, could you go over the locker capacity again and kind of explain a little more detail of why you need two sets of lockers?
The two sets of lockers, one is for their personal gear, change of clothes. Sometimes things splatter on them, and so they have to take a shower and they have locker facilities for that. The second set of lockers is for their safety equipment, their harnesses, their breathing apparatuses, their safety equipment that they use. And that's actually stored in the actual garage portion.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, how would the council like wish to act on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 24016, approval of change order number one, with number two and three coming soon, to the treatment operations building remodel contract with Darden Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of $94,320.28.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
No, I just think it's great that number two is coming down the pipe.
Like, we should have a pool or something, you know?
Boys in their bathroom here.
Well, thank you for that. Will the clerk take the roll, please, before we get any more discussion here?
Coming down the pipe.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Oh, yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a proposal to move some dirt around. And Mr. Timison, as you direct this, perhaps you can address some of the concerns that were brought up earlier. We would appreciate that.
You bet. Good evening, council. I'm here to share with you this opportunity. This map is showing I-90 in the center. This is Atlas Road. This is the roundabout at Seltice. The Atlas mill site would be down on the lower right-hand corner. So this piece of property that is in the hands of the city today is located just north of I-90 on the west side of Atlas as you would go up that slope. So it sits right in here, rough numbers, it's about an acre and a half. The city and specifically the water department worked with ITD through about 2017, 18, into 2019, where they deeded, quick claim deeded, this chunk to the city. That was actually before any of the plans on widening and all those good things. The city went and did a test well here, so we know what the soils are, went deep and ran into too much sand. Sand is not good in pumping water. It tears up motors and everything else. The water department chose not to proceed with a full-blown well. The idea here was the fact that this well, had it been perfect, would have gotten more water to our downtown area. So instead, we're putting a line and are bringing water from further north of here. You know all about the area that is called Mount Hink, which is no longer a mountain, also known as Area Number Three. So the opportunity and why this is coming forward is the fact that there's not enough structural fill material at Mount Hink to do any of the proposed improvements. There's still time to work on what we want to do there. I have in the audience two knowledgeable individuals, one engineer, Mr. Boyd, and one director of Ignite, Mr. Burns. So, we are here tonight to take a look at this opportunity. Interstate 90 is now progressing with a widening, and in so doing, we believe that we have a win-win-win opportunity. So again, this property came to the city of Coeur d'Alene. The state Idaho Transportation Department can directly give to the city via quick claim deed. No money needs to exchange. The city of Coeur d'Alene has a component unit known as Ignite. We can deed property to them without an exchange of funds. That is totally legal. ITD today does want a swale, a large swale here, and it is in their plan. Ignite and their engineer have reached out to ITD. The city has double-checked, and yes, they would like to have that. So we're proposing that by working to move the structural fill material from this area, including creating a swale, hauling it down Atlas through the roundabout at Seltice to the Mount Hink area, we can tee this property up for development. It is proposed that the contractor would then backhaul approximately 60,000 cubic yards and then the northern portion of this piece would put that log waste. None of that log waste would go into the swale, and so it would percolate as it needs to percolate. The engineering has also contemplated any widening up to like five lanes if Atlas were ever to grow in the future. And this swale and the area that would be with the backhauled waste would be out of the way of any widening that would take place in the future on Atlas Road. You recognize there's going to be a lot of impervious surface over Atlas when that gets to be six lanes wide. That's a pretty good-sized bridge deck that will be over the top of Atlas. So you've got an idea of roughly what the yardages are. The reason we're coming to you in this fashion is that we are still in springtime. The goal would be to, if council is agreeable and the Ignite Board sees their way through this, to get going on this early in March and move quickly to get ahead of the summertime traffic in that season. I've got a director of streets and engineering that is watching closely what would need to be done to keep the roads cleaned. We have in your packet a little bit of the engineering. This is totally exciting for engineers, not so much for me. But this would show your swale area, the area that they're looking at, the width of Atlas that would be available in the future should it get widened. Those are topo lines. They like it so much, they gave me another slide on this particular swale. And that is the traffic flagging program so that we could keep traffic moving as best as it can. You'll see the yellow line on the eastbound Seltice. That's so the trucks, I imagine they're dump, large trucks, can migrate in there, slow down, and we would keep traffic flowing on the inside lane. So again, I have team members here that can answer any technical questions. I am open to any questions you might have this evening, Mayor and council. No cost to the city?
Woody?
Well, that was my question, cost, somebody's paying.
That would be Ignite's contract to have that trucking done.
So is that, has that been kind of projected?
We can ask Tony about that.
Okay. And you said log waste, that's what Mount Hink is, and it's going to stack up over there, we're just going to take the good dirt out, is that?
Yeah, I don't think it will be stacked up. It actually will infill where we've harvested the structural fill material at this parcel in the red outline.
And it won't stink, won't stink up for those homes that are right there? No?
So yes, Mount Hink is not done giving at this moment.
All right, thank you.
Dan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, do we have an MOU or any kind of agreement with ITD about the stuff you just talked about?
We have talked with their director. We do not have a formal MOU at this point.
Regarding the swale?
Correct. We know what their engineering is. We dovetailed their engineering into this concept. Actually, could make it a little deeper if they would like. They want the property back. I would suggest we also want them to have it back. We don't want to maintain their swale. So they were looking through the negotiations to receive this property back since we received it in about 2019.
So it came to us in 2019?
Correct.
And there was nothing in there that said they would want it back with crappy soil?
There was not.
Okay. The soil in Mount Hink, has that ever been tested?
Yes.
And?
It was clean.
It's clean? There's no oil in there, nothing? It's just not good building soil?
Not at all good building soil, correct.
Okay, so like Woody said, we don't need to tell the neighbors that they're going to have contaminated soil dumped over their fence?
We don't believe it's contaminated at the level that it needed to be remediated in that way.
I want a little bit more than belief on that.
We can get you the report.
Perhaps maybe Phil, since he ran that, could come up as an engineer and certify to the council that he knows this soil was tested and is clean.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. The, to answer Councilmember Gookin's question, DEQ, we, the city, Ignite and DEQ had a partnership, and DEQ went out and did a number of borings and tests, which we can get you the very thick document, where they went through and tested for what are called the RECRE eight, the eight contaminated, the things that you don't want to move from perhaps the Mount Hink site to the Ramsey Road pit or from the Mount Hink site to this location. And so none, there was not any contamination that caused DEQ any concern and gave the project a clean bill of health.
When was that?
Let's see, this is probably 2022, 2023.
Okay, so was that before or after Mount Hink was moved?
It was before. Yeah, before we moved anything, yeah.
And did they go down deep enough?
Yeah, we did huge test pits in there and a number of, and that's why the document is so thick. They went out and did borings in it and sampled it all the way until you get to native, because there is, ultimately, you'll get to the bottom of Mount Hink and there's native material down there. So they drilled through down to the native soil and took random samples. There's quite a process that DEQ's consultant, Tetra Tech, completed in doing that investigation.
And what's the, did we ever get an area on Mount Hink? How much is that, Area Three or whatever it is, acres?
Acres, it's just about nine acres.
Oh, it is nine, okay. I didn't know. Someone else, and I had to add, I figured you would know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil, thanks for coming. Tony, thank you for coming. We just need to have some good discussion on this to know exactly what's proposed and what we feel comfortable agreeing to. Some of the comments brought up under public comment was the value of the dirt, and that's something I should actually get back to Troy on, not you, Phil. Unless you happen to know, off the top of your head, if the city were to sell the dirt, what would the value be?
I would not be familiar with the market rates Tom was talking about. You can go buy material, it's called GSB, from Interstate for $4.50 a yard. So I'm not sure why you would spend $13 a yard buying it from here, or who would be willing to pay that when you can go to Interstate and buy it for $4.50 a cubic yard?
Okay.
How much did you say, Phil?
$4.50 a cubic yard. Yeah, and that's for a processed product. That's not for a native, you used to be able to buy what was called pit run, but you can't really buy pit run anymore. They sell you a processed material, yeah. In situations like this and other experiences we had, we will sometimes, our clients will pay a royalty for just the soil, just to purchase the soil, but those are usually But those are usually in the, in rural areas, it's fifty cents a cubic yard. You know, in other areas, you might be a buck or two bucks a yard for the royalty portion of it, because you're buying it, you're having to mine it out of the hill. It's not a processed material.
Okay.
And then Tony or Troy can answer the, how Ignite and the city can transfer products.
Yes, that'll be a question that's going to come. Thank you. And maybe this isn't for you either. We've had some discussion, I think it was the last council meeting, of what's the cost now? This isn't for you. This would be for Tony. What's the cost for the remediation of Mount Hink so far?
We got this, didn't we?
I didn't have that. Yeah, thank you.
That was a backside.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That information was shared with you in a document?
Sure. For some reason, I didn't...
It's an extra one I brought.
Okay.
It isn't in our packet.
It isn't in the packet, that's okay. Okay. But since I'm just now looking at it, do you mind, Tony?
No. I have a copy of what was sent to you on February eighth, and your question is on page, if you look at page two, it kind of gives you a table of the cost breakdown.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We had to get our memograph up and working again.
So, so in total, the forecast of total Phase Three spending is about eleven, a little over eleven million dollars.
Okay. Okay. And then, and you can go ahead and kind of give us the numbers after that, Tony. I can see it now in front of me, but since we're trying to be public and transparent, what you think the sale revenue will be and...
Sure. So the forecast of total Phase Three spending is, in case, is eleven point two million. And when we look at the Phase Three components on the revenue side, we estimate it's going to be a little over twelve point six million. So we see that we're going to, we estimate that we'll be in the black about one point four million.
Okay. All right. Well, first, I just want to make it very clear that this is a partnership the city has with Ignite on this particular project, the Atlas project. And I'm all in on the Atlas project. I think it was the most brilliant thing this council's done, I was not on council, they're the brilliant people, to secure that property so that the public has it for generations to come. It was brilliant, and it's a good partnership with Ignite to make sure that we can have that beautiful park and pay for the park, pay back the city, the loan that the city took out to purchase it. So we want this to be successful. In my opinion, if Ignite's successful, we're successful on this project. But we are a partnership. And so some of my questions are going to be directed now at Troy about what is a true partnership? Is there some, maybe some discussion about we should share the cost of this, or, I don't know. I don't know if you've had some of those discussions, so...
Well, I'll almost speak for Mr. Timison, but there is no cost to the city for this. As was pointed out, the city can gift assets to Ignite. Ignite can gift assets to the city, just like we gifted the parking garage to you all. We paid for that and we gifted it to the city. So with these public amenity or public organizations, as well as a component unit, we have that latitude. So this proposal here is no cost impact to the city.
I understand that. I think, maybe Troy, you could come back up, just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
He can stay right there.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Probably help us understand the legality a little deeper on, can we, can we take city property and not sell it through a bid process?
Yes.
That's a short answer.
Ask the attorney, we'll get a longer answer.
The city has power under fifty dash three oh one to sell and convey real and personal property. Idaho Code in Chapter fourteen of Title fifty sets out what you have to do to sell real property. There is no corresponding statute which governs how a city may get rid of personal property, which is what dirt is. That's why we have, we are able to surplus items, but there is no statutory requirement for us to go through the process that we do in terms of surplusing used trucks or whatever. We can convey them, and we can convey them to nonprofits such as, or another governmental entity such as Ignite, or anyone else for that matter.
Okay. Very thorough answer. Thank you. And I guess the final question, what's the value of the dirt?
The value of the dirt would be at two, three bucks a yard. We are looking to set this up so that we have increment that comes off of Mount Hink. And so right now, we don't have any structural fill that we can use to build there.
I understand that. Like I said, I, we all want the project to be a success. We want the partnership. But I'm just trying to work through what kind of value we're transferring. That's all.
So the value is a hundred and eighty thousand if it's three bucks a yard, a cubic yard. The real question that ought to be asked is, and I'm sure you said this somehow, but maybe it bears repeating. If the council moves forward with this recommendation as proposed, why would the city do this? What is the value to the city in proceeding? What does the city get out of this? And I don't care who chooses to answer. You look like you want to answer, Tony. Jump up.
We will tag team this if we need to, but the, as Mr. Timison pointed out, this is kind of a win-win-win opportunity that we discovered. We don't want to go out on the open market and have to buy this material, which would take years in order to fill up the remnants of Mount Hink. This opportunity here presents itself where we can get this fill material we need in a quick time manner. The city would benefit from getting this Mount Hink area Phase Three up and running and developable in a quicker timeframe, which allows us to look at presidential opportunities as well as reimbursing the city in a more timely manner. ITD gets a swale that they want, that is functional, that will meet their needs. So we see this as an opportunity. If we don't take this opportunity, then we back off, and we have to look for other opportunities, which might cost us a lot more money in time.
Kiki had a question. Kiki, to whom did you wish to direct that?
Actually, it could be Phil or Tony, I think.
It's Phil's turn.
It's Phil's turn. Since the two amounts don't match, you're taking sixty thousand cubic yards of unsuitable out, and you're getting seventy-five from the swale area. So those two don't match. Is the seventy-five enough to complete what you need to make Mount Hink buildable? And how come that doesn't balance?
So the reason that it doesn't balance is we're estimating that the remaining unsuitable material, which is, just for clarity there, it's not logs, it's just non-structural soil. So when you looked at it, you guys would look at it and say, this just looks like topsoil. So it's non-structural soils, but there's not logs in it. If there were, we would pick them out before they would be placed in this area. So that, we estimate that there's about sixty thousand cubic yards of unsuitable at Mount Hink that would get moved to the Atlas Road site. There's seventy-five thousand yards that we have done a very quick analysis of how much needs to go, and I promised Troy I won't get too far afield here, that we did a quick analysis to determine how much was necessary to complete that layout. When we got done with the last joint workshop and the council kind of indicated a desire to move more towards a market rate product, we, Tony tasked us with developing a market rate layout, so this is what came out of it. And so to move the ball forward, kind of expeditiously try to advance this so it could be put on the market, we did a grading analysis, and that, which you can't see the grading, but the grading for that would be about seventy-five thousand cubic yards is what we're estimating. But it's a little bit plus or minus, because we're at a very preliminary stage of the grading. There's no point in going forward unless the council says, yeah, we're willing to do this.
I guess I'm trying to clarify, get my head around, because Mount Hink has been sort of this, this moving target.
Yes.
Dirt gets moved here, then moved back out, then back in, then back, and so I'm thinking, is it going to be, oh, now we need to spend more money, or we're time delayed because we have to move fifteen thousand yards of dirt that we didn't need out? Is there a plan?
There is a plan. So again, without getting too far afield into this, this layout, you guys might have recognized elements of this. This is called a cottage court layout. These are twin homes that face on a green area here. Currently, we're planning that this entire site will be filled with structural soils, including the cottage green, where there is nothing going to be built. If it turns out that there's more unsuitable in Mount Hink, we plan to put that unsuitable in this cottage green area here. There's about ten thousand yards, ten or fifteen thousand yards of capacity in the cottage green area. Does that make sense?
It does. So you have a plan where you could put the rest of that material. So then the unsuitable that you're bringing on that one, the topo map one, the sixty-five thousand yards is going to fit in just one portion of that?
It'll fit in this area here. This might be, this cross-section might be a little bit more meaningful. So if, this is a cross-section looking north, and so this is Atlas Road in the widened condition that Troy mentioned, and this is where the Mount Hink backhaul would land. And you can see that this finished grade is, would be flexible. You could make it lower or taller. Here's the existing grade, and this is the ITD swale, which you can see that there's no material intended to be placed underneath that.
Okay.
In order to make sure we're preserving the permeability of the swale. So I think I'm answering it, Councilmember Miller?
I think so. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to turn into a, oh, we've got now more moving to do on the same moving target.
We hope not.
And, good. And then last thing I had is we don't have an MOU or anything other than, apparently ITD's already drafted this swale into their plan at this particular location, but what if they don't? What would our situation be if they said, yeah, we decided we don't want that back?
That they don't want the parcel of property back for their swale?
Then we just now have put our sixty-five thousand yards of unsuitable on a piece of city property. So what would happen there?
I guess just a little bit of, just a little bit of clarity here. There's right-of-way here, and then there's the fee simple parcel that's in this area. So you can see that the swale is in the fee simple portion of your property. The unsuitable would be placed within the right-of-way, which is just an excess of right-of-way that was established when I ninety was built. And so we, that's why we went through and kind of looked at this with Todd to make sure there wasn't a use for that right-of-way. And so putting unsuitable in that area, we would anticipate that that's not going to hamstring you in the future.
Okay.
Because it's in right-of-way. Some of it is on the fee simple portion here, but that's actually the ramp that goes into the swale. It's a future ramp, because they access the swale through here to clean it.
Okay, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm with Kiki on this. I think we need to take the swale off the table. Unless we had an MOU or something from ITD that said they definitely want a swale there, ITD can change its mind and does a lot. So I would feel more comfortable just not talking about the swale without anything to back it up. I'm also concerned about these costs. I mean, I've heard numbers tossed out there, and I did my own research using the all-knowing internet, actually AI, and I asked it how much to pay for structural fill, and it said between ten and thirty bucks. And you guys are tossing around, what, two fifty, three dollars? I forget what you're tossing around. We don't know. You know, we're not experts up here, and I would like to have some data, quotes maybe, to say what this stuff would actually cost. Because, quite honestly, if it is, you know, whatever the price was quoted earlier, and it's only two hundred thousand dollars to buy it, that doesn't seem to be a tremendous dent in something that you're projected to spend eleven million dollars on already. And then there's the value to the city, too. I mean, it's not really a quid pro quo. It's good dirt that's just sitting there right now, being replaced with dirt that everyone admits is not good dirt. And I don't know if there's anything bad in it or not, let's hope not, but it just, it doesn't seem like a fair trade to me. And then there's the whole subject of Mount Hink. I mean, and I'm glad that we're talking about this, because that's what I wanted to talk about. So Ignite has already spent, according to this, five and a half million dollars, moving most of Mount Hink, apparently not all of it away. And then it says onsite costs, another million dollars. Future Phase Three development costs of three point four million dollars. Future Phase Three earthwork costs of one and a quarter million dollars, for a total of eleven and a quarter million dollars. It's a lot of money to put into a hole. And I'm reminded that, you know, you owe us, or Ignite owes us, whatever, eight million dollars. And it seems like if we would have just left Mount Hink the way it was supposed to be, the way it was, we would have had a ball field or a park, and we would have gotten paid back. So I don't know who's making decisions there, but it seems very typical of my observations of government that shoveling money into a hole doesn't seem to be an issue. Eleven million dollars is a lot of public money. And apparently, we're not even done. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Woody?
Well, there's just a couple of questions I had. I was thinking back to the original plan, a big park, a big grassy swale thing in there. And I get it now, theoretically, this will generate revenue forevermore, tax increment in the long run, which is what urban renewal does. I was thinking about what Kiki said about the sixty to get it out and seventy-five to put it back in. I was thinking about when we decided to move Hink to the pit, and you guys, that's what you guys do, you measure holes and you figure out how much dirt goes in it. But we didn't get it all in there, right? Is that, do you guys take responsibility? Is that an engineer thing? Are you guys just kind of guess-it stuff?
Yeah, no, so...
Take your way out there.
That's actually a really good question. It's one of the things that we talk about a lot up front. When we were doing the soil borings out here, you go out and you do a pattern of soil borings in order to try to determine where the bottom of the pit is, in order to estimate the quantity of unsuitable in there. And you can decide, we're going to go do a soil boring every ten feet and spend half a million dollars in order to categorize the, how big the volume is, or we can go spend fifty thousand dollars and, you know, understand that we're going to develop a model of it, but it's not going to be as accurate as if you spent half a million dollars. And typically, owners are willing to not spend as much upfront, and because then it's, you're not sinking a cost that does a lot for you. I don't know if that makes sense or not. So that was the approach that was taken here.
So I want to be an engineer when I grow up, because I just get to kind of fumble some numbers around. Just kidding. I don't want to be. I've grown up and I've not found my way. One other question. When they quote a cost of dirt, you just heard some differences, is that without the transportation, or is that just, do we even think in those terms?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, because the numbers that are thrown out are conflated, because you talk about royalty, you talk about transported quantities, prices that it's transported, and then also placed, in place. So the price we've actually negotiated with La Riviera on this is twelve dollars a cubic yard. That is picked up, put in the truck, driven to the site, placed in the site, and compacted to a structural condition. So just for accuracy, that's the number that we're talking about, which is very, we ground-truth that, looked at their haul times, compared it with other projects that we have going, and we think that that's a competitive rate.
So almost free dirt, but you have some costs of moving it around?
Absolutely, because it has to be picked up and hauled and placed and compacted.
So even if you had free dirt, you'd still have to pay some kind of movement and placement and spreading it and all that? Okay.
The equivalent market rate, if we were to go buy this from a supplier, we would pay at least double that, probably more closer to the thirty dollars a yard Councilman Gookin referred to. That's for a purchase from a supplier, bringing it in, placing it and compacting it.
Okay.
So our savings is somewhere in the eighteen dollars a cubic yard.
Okay, thank you.
Amy?
He just answered my question. That was exactly where I was going, on how much if we had to pay market price if we didn't take advantage of this situation. My second question is maybe for Randy. Is there any benefit in making, if we were to move forward, making it contingent on a signed MOU with ITD?
Or a letter of intent?
Or, yeah, a letter of intent, anything to help ease the minds about the swale?
Certainly, MOUs help identify each party's obligations and responsibilities. So yes, that would be the ideal situation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to editorialize a little bit for a second. Councilman Gook talked about that Ignite owes us...
Councilman Gook talked about that Ignite owes us $8 million. So, I want to kind of work our way through that. I wasn't on the council when they purchased the property, and it was a loan the city took from the wastewater treatment facility to purchase the property. Like I said earlier, brilliant, glad you did it. So, it's not really that Ignite owes the city. We entered into an agreement with them to develop the property so that we could pay for that wonderful park through tax increment over time. Now, their Ignite is also, I think, invested for at least $9 million or more in the infrastructure. So, through all of this, through the sale of the property, over time, through a performa that was agreed to by this council, we will both bring back the money that both of entities have spent to pay for this wonderful park, that will be, again, in the future of Idahoans for generations. So, I, I want to be very specific about that. It's not as if Ignite owes us $8 million. It's an agreement where we all will get the benefits of, of this down the road. With that said, one question. Troy, do we have any current city projects that we're going to need dirt for?
I cannot think of any projects that we need structural fill material for right now.
Okay. And I know that we are in process of a couple of renovations, hopefully the police department soon. That dirt from the police department, can that be used down the road?
The dirt at the police property is basically topsoil, so we actually need to get rid of topsoil. If we could bring topsoil to Mount Hink, that would be good, but I'll have an engineer that says he doesn't want that.
Unless it fits in the, in the, in the cottage green area here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil, did I hear you correctly that your hauler, T. LaRive, is going to be calculating what they're charging Ignite at $1,200, uh, $12 a yard?
That's the price that has been currently negotiated with them that will go in front of the board tomorrow, depending on what happens here.
Doing math on my calculator, $12 a yard at 75,000 yards is $900,000 for them to move free dirt.
Yes.
Again, they spent $11 million on a hole. It makes sense that they would spend $900,000 on free dirt. Mr. Mayor, I've heard a lot of great stuff from council tonight, some stuff I agree with and not, but I understand that there are a lot of questions, and I'm curious if council would be interested in tabling this item so that we could get more information, like the MOU that was asked for, or maybe prices on dirt, and then come back to us and let us know some more details? If we could table this till the next meeting? Motion to table this item until the next meeting.
I'll second that for discussion.
We have a motion and a second to table this item until our next council meeting. Further discussion on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I am in support of that, only because I'd like to shore up a couple of these loose ends, but I also want to be assured that we aren't going to miss this opportunity, because I do think it's an opportunity. And we can get all these facts and figures and prices together, but if we don't have free dirt, we're just putting it back on Ignite to say, okay, now go buy dirt to fill the structural material hole of Mount Hink, because you're already in it. You can't just stop what you're doing. And that could put us out further and further from being able to develop that piece of property, which means it's further and further until Ignite can pay us back, pay back that loan, and they have less money because they've had to go out and spend money on the structural fill. So, I think this, I recognize this as an opportunity. I don't want to miss it by putting it onto the next agenda. And so, if we can be assured that we aren't going to miss an opportunity, I would like to have at least a letter of intent or something a little more concrete, because I could see that, you know, this, this whole process could fall apart if ITD isn't, I mean, I, I guess I can't, it can't really fall apart, because once you start moving the dirt, you're moving it onto your own property. So, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, but if the city's intent is to not have that property and have it go to ITD as part of this deal, then we have to just recognize that that may be something that doesn't work out.
Dan?
Well, I think it does make sense. I mean, for, to me, it sounds like that's a reasonable short-term delay in the span of things, probably isn't going to make a, you know, a whole lot of difference. And, and I think having that, you know, something, we've got to have something to hang on with, you know, ITD, so I think that's good. Also, you know, we've had a lot of talk about the price of the whole thing, which, you know, I would make the analogy, you know, if you go get your car fixed, you know, and the cost of parts, which is basically the dirt in this case, you know, is often a small part compared to the labor. And that, I mean, this, where they're moving it and putting it in and scraping it down, and then they're going to, I mean, get ready so that, you know, it's saleable for Ignite. So, and sometimes, I think if you brought your own parts into the shop, they'd charge you even more than if they, so, so that, to me, that kind of a ratio of, you know, ending up at $12 when it's, you know, all of the labor and all of that seems reasonable, but also this two-week delay definitely sounds reasonable to me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Amy.
Troy, can you comment on the delay and any impact that may have to this opportunity? Or maybe the question is for Tony?
We have emails from ITD seeking access to that property. They've already asked our city engineer if they can have that back for the swale. I totally concur that we could, with your vision, ask that Ignite gets that, so that we can make sure they're happy with even the haul road coming in. The window is, you know, March quickly turns into April, May, and now all of a sudden, the roads get busier and other things like that. Right now, it's a great time to sweep and clean up roads. You also have a contractor that's looking to mobilize. So, again, it's on the agenda tomorrow for Ignite. But I totally agree that if you are so inclined to move this forward, that we could ask them to acquire that. The follow-up to that would be, are we comfortable moving this, it's not a decision point, back to ITD? Because that would be coming forward to you. If this hadn't come together, and actually, I think city staff brought this to the attention of Ignite and said, we can't use it for a well site, would you like to have it back? ITD does want it back, and if we were willing to say, hey, let's enter into this, we'll get the swale teed up for you, and we would look to bring you the property when it's all done, that would be a, a package that would tie up nicely.
Thank you.
Dan?
Troy, following up on that, does ITD know that we're going to be taking 75,000 cubic yards out and putting in 60,000 yards of different lower-quality soil?
The conversation took place with Mr. Allen. They don't have any other use other than the swale for that property, to the best of my understanding.
He doesn't know.
Well, let's see how the council wants to vote on this. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
McEvers?
Yes. Motion carries. This has been tabled till the next council meeting. We do need an executive session.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Are we, do we need to give direction to staff on what exactly we want to have put in the packet, or?
What I would ask you to do, thank you, I, I intended to talk about that. What I would ask each of the council to do is by the end of the day tomorrow, submit any questions you have to Troy's office so that they can be sure and have time to prepare the responses well before our next meeting. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I could, we have students in the back. Are you guys students? I want you guys to look up something called the sinking cost fallacy, and make that part of your homework. Thank you.
And do you need us to sign off before we go into exec? We'll do that.
So, we'll, we'll catch you.
Can we thank Tony and Phil for coming out tonight? Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session as provided by Idaho Code 74-206F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency and to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated, and 74-206I, to engage in communications with a representative of the public agency's risk manager or insurance provider to discuss adjustment of a pending claim or prevention of a claim imminently likely to be filed.
Second.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Hi.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
It is now 7 o'clock on the money. We will reconvene in executive session at 7:05.